Alright, so just to repeat, uh, since Boise is here now. This question actually came out in the exam. That's the very last question. There were thirteen questions, this is the thirteenth question. So it's actually just Q thirteen in the exam. Okay? And yes, this is the hardest one. It was to the point where the students, on my exam, in my university. In my university. For the normal math exam. Because there, in my university, there are three levels. It's not from A-levels, okay? But there are three levels, and this is the normal math one, not the higher level one. And this is the last question in their midterm exam. I didn't take it, because I'm not there. It was, this was so hard, to the point where they had to make a petition to can, cancel it. But yeah, so, normal meeting the easiest, yeah, yeah. Uh, I don't, I don't like to say the easiest, but technically it is... Okay? Yeah, the regular one, the, yeah, regular, regular. I should say regular, it's more fitting. Okay, right, so, let's start, yeah? You just more motivating, okay? Alright, let's start with the first one. Let's do A first, uh, let's do A here. Using the fact that x is less than pi by two sine x. For this interval, zero to pi over two. Show that this inequality is true. So we have Bn less than blah 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 An. So this motivates us to start from BN, right? Because there's a BN left hand side, so why not, let's try to start from BN? So let's, let's do BN. Okay, and what's BN actually? Well, BN is shown here, it's defined here. So these two integrals are actually very related. It's just that BN has an x squared. So, oh yeah, just, let's write it down first. If I'm going too fast, or my writing is ineligible, please tell me. Not eligible. Is, is that how you say ineligible? Whatever. Whatever, you get what I mean. But anyway. Using this inequality that we're given. Unintelligible, okay, there you go. Okay, there you go, yeah, thank you, thank you. Now you know I feel English. Well. We already have an x squared here. And we were told that x is less than pi by two sine x. Of course, we have, we just have to apply it, right? Right? So this is less than. If we replace the x squared. Or all the x technically, with pi by two sine x. So we have this. And this is where the inequality comes from. From this guy right here. I mean technically, of course, because. If you're multiplying with something bigger. Then of course the integral is gonna be bigger, right? Makes sense? That makes sense, right? If you're gonna multiply with something bigger, then of course the air, area, the integral is larger. And that's where it came from. And from here, you just have to simplify things. This is constant, let's pull it out. So we have pi squared over four. Zero to pi by two, sine squared, x, cos two n, x, and everything, everything blah blah. But this integral is not so familiar to us, so let's make it a bit more familiar. Remember that sine squared x is just one minus cosine squared x? That's what we're gonna use. So we have, I'm so lazy to write cosine, so I'll write c, okay, I hope you don't mind. So we have one minus c squared, c to n, x. And from here, we can just expand. So pi squared over four. C to n, dx, minus pi squared over four, zero to pi over two. C to n plus two. Yes, c in here just means cosine, okay? Because you know, I'm being lazy, please allow me to be lazy. Right? And if you notice. This is just An. And this is, so this is An plus one. By the definition of An, right here. Yeah? Now the problem is, we don't want any An plus one, we only want An. The question is, how? So this is, yeah, let me just write it down again. Pi squared over four, An, minus pi squared over four, An plus one. Maybe we can manipulate the An plus one somehow, so we can get some An stuff? Product rule, yeah, exactly. So that means we need to use, we actually have, well, it's called reduction formula for cosine, actually. So let's actually do that. Cosine two n, it's two x, dx, yeah, like this. So that, what we're actually trying to do is just to do the reduction formula for cosine. So how to do it? We just split this up to cosine two n plus one, and cosine x, dx. Integrate the cosine and differentiate the cosine two n plus one. Yeah, we have, we have, we just have to strip one cosine. And you'll, we'll see that we'll get, uh, something nice later. Well, if you do cosine squared, then that's gonna be harder to integrate. So we just use cosine. Okay? So that means, integrating cosine, we should have sine x. So cos two n plus one, x, sine x, zero to pi over two. And notice, this is just zero. This whole thing is just zero, when you put zero, the sign of zero is zero. When you put pi over two here, it's also zero, so this whole thing just becomes zero, so it's really nice. Lastly, we have to differentiate cosine two n plus one. Yeah, cosine power two n plus one. So minus the integral off. Well, power rule, this is like, yeah, chain rule. So the power rule first. Two n plus one. And then the chain rule, differentiating cosine x becomes sine x, right? Neg, negative sine x, sorry. So negative sine x. Cosine two n, because from two n plus one, minus one becomes two n. And lastly, don't forget this sign here. DX, okay? And from here, we can finally factor out the two n plus one. The negatives also cancel, so that's nice. And lastly, we have cosine two n. And sine squared. DX. We're not done yet. Because we, we still haven't get the reduction formula. But we can, I think you already know it, just make sine squared to one minus cosine squared. You should get it soon. So two n plus one. All you see again, because I'm lazy. C to n, one minus c squared. And everything, you just continue from here, actually. I think you guys already know how to do it, right? I hope so. Two n plus one? Yeah, two n plus one. Okay? So notice that this is actually just An. And this one is An plus one, again. All these assume such things. But you guys take for a map, you should know it, right? And then you can just combine the An plus ones together. So we should be having. Two n plus two here. Yeah, just have your question first. And hence, An plus one is equal to two n. Plus one, all over this, and everything else. Tada! Looks very nice, right? It's just, it's just calculations every time. The inequality information, right, sorry, we apply such that, eh, sorry, we applied that in such cases, I mean frankly, I've never experienced that. Well, you've never experienced that, because they don't give you that in A-levels, that's the first. And yes, you can apply that, as long as it, the interval satisfies, like for example. That's why I have, I wrote this here, and it's also written there in the exam, of course. Oh, sorry. That, that inequality that they give. Only works for this interval. And if your integral goes in that interval, then of course you can apply it, it makes sense to apply it. Okay? Or a subset of that interval, like, let's say if you wanna do from pi to, uh, from zero to pi over four, then that's okay, because that's under zero to pi over two, that's also okay. Okay? So if the limits are, are, like. If the limits are out of bounds, yeah, you may not be able to apply it, because things might get wrong. Okay? As long as your limits are inside the restricted area, the, then, yeah, you're allowed. Okay? That's it basically. Alright, so now, now that we have this, let's just apply it there. Actually, we'll factor out the pi squared over four here. So we have. One, wait, no, not one, An, minus An plus one. But we know that An plus one is just this, two n plus one over two n plus two. So, so let's write that down. An, that's two n plus one. Two n plus two. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll share this. Uh, no worries. We can factor out now the An. And hence, we just simplify things. So much things to simplify, my hands gonna get tired soon. Okay? And that's where we have this. So all in all, this is BN is less than this guy. Okay? All these, yeah, all these lines, for part A. I think part A was, how many marks was it? All I remember was that this is twenty marks. This is, this is worth twenty marks in the exam back then. So if you lost this question, you have eighty. Your maximum is only eighty. Part A has to be the hardest. Um, I would say no, part C is the hardest, actually. Okay? I mean, reduction can explain how you choose to be u and wish to be dv. Part A is easy, yeah. Once you know what to, how to apply the inequality, things just become easy. It's just all calculations, but if you can't see that, then of, of course, it's really hard. Uh, how, how you choose which to be u and which to be dv? Which to be u and which to be dv depends on what you're integrating. Of course, you, you don't want to integrate the hard one. In this case, we split this way. Well, of course, we're not gonna integrate cosine two n. If the, any of sine squared, cosine, you can split in different ways. Well, in that case, you have to make sine squared to, on minus cosine squared first. He's just the guy having the n s power, yeah. Well, if you think about the opposite way, if you want, if you let the dv be the one having the power n. How you're gonna integrate that? It, it's not easy, it's better to differentiate the harder term, and integrate the easier term, that's the sense. That's the intuition, yeah. No longer reduction formula two. Yeah, no, well technically, I guess, uh, depends, it depends, yeah. Differentiate the term that approaches zero. Also, yes, that also, could also work, but we will see that we will not do that, we'll differentiate the term. No, we'll integrate the term that goes up, you will see in part C. Later in part C, you'll see that. Sometimes, we don't want to differentiate the term that pushes zero. But most of the time, yes, most of the time. Right, are, are there any more questions about part A? So part A, all in all, this is just less than, oops. Pi squared, An, all over eight times n plus one. With S S. Oh yeah, then that's just integration by substitution. The one you gave me is just integration by substitution, just let u is equal to cosine c, right? Eh, cosine, no, cosine c, just cosine, yeah. So I, this, integration by parts is very redundant. And that might as nearly, well, intuition, I guess. It really, it really depends on the situation, so I can't really give a general, uh, rule for that. Yeah, intuition was, and that's the reason why this question was really hard, actually. Almost all didn't get it. And there were only out of a thousand people, I think? Yeah, there's a thousand people in this course. Only thirty-two people got ninety above. More than ninety percent as their score. So the mean was fifty-three. In this, uh, exam. The mean is fifty-three. Yes? Can you do part B without doing A? Yes, you can, because part A is completely useless in part B and C. Well, we'll, we'll see, we'll see, we're gonna do it, it's okay, we're gonna do it, just chill. Okay? Alright, I think it's all okay, yeah, uh, if you have questions, questions, just throw, throw them, I'll answer. Now let's go to part C, because I don't wanna do part B. Part B is just special case of part C anyway, so let's just do the general version of it. Okay? I hope you don't mind. Okay? So we need to show that An is equal to this whole thing in the right hand side. So of course, this motivates us to start from An instead. Because An's alone there, so let's start from P, An. Let's equal to, what's the definition, it's this guy, right? Cosine two n, x, dx. Okay? Now, here's the deal. We start from An. And then we'll end up with something in terms of BN. Right? We start from An, and we'll, we'll end up with BN. And if you notice, BN has an x squared inside the integral, or in the integrand, yeah. We're gonna start from no x's at all, to suddenly we have x squared. So this motivates us to do integration by parts, integrating one. Twice, yes, twice. Therefore, uh, I hope you know the di method, the tabular method. All right, d here and i here, so plus, minus, plus, whatever. So we wanna differentiate cosine power two n. X, and integrate. Okay? Integrating one is easy, you just get x, and then we have x squared, y two, x squared over two. The only problem is differentiating cos power two n. And I need a lot of space here, because it's gonna get long. Alright, differentiating cosine, power two n, we have the chain rule again, so we have two n. And then cosine two n minus one. Derivative of cosine is negative sign, so we'll have negative instead. Negative here, sine x. And one, one more time, we have to differentiate this. And this was the part that many people just, uh, didn't see. They did not expect that they have to, uh, do integration by parts twice in a row. Alright, so let's do it, I'll factor it, cost the negative two n first, actually. Alright, differentiating sign, we got cosine. So we have cosine power two n, x. And then plus, well, we differentiate this guy, so we should get. Two n minus one, cosine two n minus two x. Derivative of cosine is negative sign again, so I'll change the plus sign to negative, and then sine x. Right? See, I almost touched this guy. Right? Clear so far? It's just differentiating, but you just have to be careful, of course, I'm not saying this is easy. Okay? And of course, by tabular method. Diagonals will, means you multiply them, right? And you put the bounds, the zero and pi over two. But if you notice, when you put the bounds, they're all zero, this is just zero and zero. When you put zero in x, the whole thing just becomes zero. When you put pi over two in cosine, it just becomes zero. Right? So all we have to do is just deal with this guy right here. We, we can do E, in the exam, I think you can. Okay, I don't remember if you can, but I think you can. Wait, oh, you can't? I, I don't know if you can, I, I seriously don't remember, I seriously don't remember, sorry. But if you can't do, then good luck. Little award, oh, okay, okay. I seriously don't remember, sorry. It's been a while. Hey? So from here, we can just do multiplication. Yeah, we won't get this, but yeah. You guys won't get this, but, uh, here's just an extreme example of reduction formula. Okay? So multiplying this, we should be getting, well, we can see that two's cancel here. And then we have, uh, the negative n, so yeah, negative n. Well, not, not integral, eh, it is integral, sorry. Prime for two. X squared, just multiply everything in the brackets here. So yeah. Eh, wait. Sorry. This should be sine squared. Yeah, this should be sine squared. Because of the sign coming from here, and the sign coming from the derivative of cosine, like that. Okay? Yeah, that was my mistake, sorry. So we have cosine two n, x, minus everything, just everything. Okay, and then from here, now we just have to simplify things, just tidy, tidy everything up. Oops. Expand, yeah, expand. Cosine two x, cosine x dx. I might make a mistake here. I hope not. The more calculations there are, the more mistakes I'll make. The more likely, at least. Okay, I hope this is correct, the negative goes here, negative goes here, this becomes a plus. Yeah, we're almost done, we are almost done. Alright, so you can see that this is just BN. So we just have to take care of this guy. But this is nothing but. C two n minus two. Times one minus c squared. Okay? So I'll write it down, minus n, BN. And everything, just copy, copy, copy. C two n minus two. Oh, there's an x squared, sorry, x squared, x squared here. And then minus, yeah, minus. X squared. Oh, my god. We can also expand this directly if you want, you can just expand directly here. And I'll do that, so I'll erase the brackets. You can't do this in paper, haha. iPad privilege. Okay? And so from here, you can, if you notice that this guy here, and this minus one cancels. So all in all, we have n, two n minus one. Remember that this is BN minus one, so BN minus one. Minus two n squared. Yeah. And that's how you do it. Okay? Just few lines, right? Not so bad, right? If only we could use a tabular method, I hope so, I, I don't know, I can't remember, I hope you guys can, because that's so much, it'll be so much easier to do. But I really don't remember if you can, if, well, if you can't, then sorry, I guess. Ah, liat. Well, at your university, yes, we can, we're allowed to use tabular method. At least in my class, we're allowed to. Oh, but, but we're not allowed to use calculator, for the normal math, the normal math, but you're not allowed to use your calculator. In my math, you can, because it's useless to have a calculator. Always dealing, yeah, decreasing function, yeah, yes. Almost all the cases, yeah. Actually, yeah, you just say all, because you say all. Di method. Yeah, when differentiate. Okay? Any questions in this part here? If you don't get part B, just let, and just go to one, and tada, you're done. Just conclude it here. An. Oh, my writing is going down, it's descending. Okay? Why are you putting an R? Yeah. So in An, we split in the, yeah, two ways. Given cost. It's, uh. And for part C, this part C. We differentiate cos power two n, because we want to integrate one to get an x squared. So of course, it's, uh, we are forced to differentiate cos power two n. No, not, not decreasing as a function, no, 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 not decreasing as a function. But the, the power, the power decreases when you differentiate, like, from two n to two n minus one, two n minus two, that, I think that's what Boise means. When you differentiate the power, yeah, it, the power goes down, basically. Okay? I hope that helps. Actually, for part C, we want to, we differentiate cos power two n. Because we want to integrate one. To get an x squared, if you remember. Our target is to somehow make x squared. So of course, we're forced to int, integrate one. Which means that we have to int, to differentiate whatever that's left, which is, which is just cos power two n. Yeah? That's the reason why it's, uh, it's like that. Okay? Any questions? Anything confusing? The whole question's confusing, maybe, well, yeah, maybe. Crystal clear, okay? Thank you for the reply. Let's do the next part, okay? Part D, show that this equation is true, oh, acid just woke up. Can anybody tell him to come here? He said he just woke up. Part D, show that this equation is true, and hence, we solve the famous problem. Pi squared over six. So of course, part D, we need to start from part C. And, because it, it looks very similar, right, somehow, it looks very similar. There's the BN, minus one BN here. And the An just goes down there. Well, actually, that's the clue. We want the An to be at the denominator, so of course, we want to do, to find, uh, no, sorry, to divide by An. Okay? So let's start from here. Do we even have space? No? Copy. Okay? So of course, we wanna divide by An, so we have one here. And two n minus one. An minus one, over An. Minus, and it's just everything, copy, copy. Okay? The only problem is that. Yeah, as, uh, as you said, An minus one. We need that An minus one here. Well, we only have a normal An. Well, no problem, we, we know the reduction formula already, where, where do you find it? Right here, right? Here, just use this. If this is An plus one, yeah, just make it to n minus one, correct. So we have n, normal An, is two n minus one, two n, minus one. Symbol, right? I hope that's not too hard to see. Whatever, just put it here. Oops. I don't know, my, my goodness always like that. So one is equal to, and two n minus one. So what's An? It's this guy right here. So what's a n? It's this guy right here, let's just copy it. And if you notice, two n minus one, two n minus one cancel. So we have this guy. And now, I think you can see that you can, now you just have to divide by n squared. Yeah, like that. How did you get a sub n plus one? A sub n plus one was by the reduction formula. Start from a n plus one. And then we re- do the reduction formula. How did you get a n plus one? Oh, how did I get a n plus one? Yeah, oh, yeah. This is a, yeah, this is in part A. How did I get n minus one? In, in, in here, in here? This one? For, if you're asking about this one, then we just change it to, you know, you just make the n plus n to n. So you minus one everything, minus one, just minus one everything. It would theoretically work, ah. Technically, yeah, but it's hard. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so we got that not so badly, we, we got what they asked for. Alright, so now we just have to show the sum of all, one over n squared becomes five squared over six. Well, from here, I, I think you can just see that you just have to make, you just have to sum it from one to, let's say, capital N, we take the partial sum first. So that we have, I'll write it here, minus one to one, up to capital N, this equal to. This guy. Just not, I didn't write it two. Okay, I noticed that the right hand side is telescoping. It's a telescoping sum, so it's really nice. So we have two, b zero, a zero, minus two, b n, over a n, correct? Yeah, a difference thing, it's called, the official name is called telescoping sum. That, that, it has a name, telescoping sum. Yeah, the parts get easier and easier. It is, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm outdated. But anyways, so of course, since you want to sum it to infinity, we want to take this, the limit to infinity, right? To infinity. And therefore, we have to take this limit also to infinity, the N, to capital N to infinity. Now, the question is, what, how, how do you find it? What's the value of this guy? Can you go back to b n and a n? Where's b n and a n, which one? Ah, sure, here, up here. Any ideas, any idea? You guys can think first, take your time. If you take the limit as n goes to infinity of b n over a n, what's the value? Alex, don't answer. Is it part A? Yeah, it has something to do with part A, yes. Correct. Yeah, b n over a, so if you see, if we divide it by a n, we should have b n over a n, right? Yeah, right, like that, that's correct. And then compare limits, so what, what can you say? Well, yeah, okay, less than zero, yeah, oh, yeah, N to infinity. So what, what, what does it approach to? Zero, right? This is zero. But what does that tell you about the b n over a n? So the limit of b n over a n is less than zero, less than or equal to zero, okay? Wait, wait, oops. Approaches zero. Well, the, squeeze theorem can't be applied until you have a lower bound. You need to have a lower bound, can we find, yeah, that's my question, can you find one? Can you find one? A lower bound? Yeah, take your time, come on, you got this. Is it a thing on screen? No, nothing, nothing? You need to find it on your own. It is not even, can we make a partial fraction? That would be even worse, there, there's no partial fractions here, nothing to do with partial fraction. All right, let me write it down here first, ah. So, b n over a n is less than pi squared. So the limit. Must be less than or equal to zero. No, we don't have to use that fact. There's some thing that you're actually missing. B n less than or equal to zero, no? You need to find a lower bound, like this, right here. Why is this? Definition, no, 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 no definition. Oh, we don't need definitions of sinus, they're bounded between one and minus one, okay? Okay, what can you do about that? I think you, you guys are overthinking this. Try to think simply about a n and b n. I'll write them down, a n, yes. Yes. Yeah, there you go. I, you guys are overthinking this. Try to think simply. B n greater than a n, not necessarily. Actually, it should be a n bigger than b n, because, well, one point five, well, actually, there's no conclusion, there's no conclusion. We can't conclude that. Nothing to do with x squared, well, just a bit, but not much, not, not really, actually, nothing to do with x squared. B n is not bigger than a n, there's no conclusion for that. Just because there's an x squared, well, if you, you think about it. The graph of x squared is less than one for zero to one, can be fraction. Like, if you think about, let's say, when x is zero point five, well, x squared is one fourth, right? Which is lesser than one. A simple idea, a simple idea. So, this, this makes it wrong, this makes it wrong. There is no conclusion about b n and a n bigger than each other. B is even. Uh, no, also no. Cosine is even, but. The graph, nothing to do with graph, you don't even actually need to know graph. What's a lower bound? What is b n, b n over a n bigger than? And, and also, by the way, if you, if you say b n over a n is bigger than one, but let's say, this is, if this is what you're saying. Let's say, let's say that you say this, you, you're telling me that it's gonna be like this, one is less than zero? Of course not, right? That, that doesn't make sense, so it's not, it can't be one. So what is this? Okay, uh, I, I'll give you, do you want me to give you a hint on this? Without calculating. What's the value of this a n? What, what can you tell about the value of this without calculating? Tell me without calculating. Hmm, no, it's not zero, but surely it's not zero. That's correct, it's not zero. And cosine is, cosine looks like this, just for reference here, this is how cosine looks like. Uh, I draw badly, oops, yeah, this is pi over two. Just for your reference. Cosine x. Without calculation, tell me, what can you say about the value of a n? Greater than one, okay? Not, not, sometimes it can't be greater than one, well. Uh, yeah, no, it's not greater than one. The value of a n, yes, without calculation, no calculations required. Tell me what, what can you tell about the value of a n? Always positive, that's correct, always positive. So a n is always positive, yeah, greater than zero, what about b n? And so is b n, you mean? Yeah, b n, okay, so a n is bigger than zero, b n is bigger than zero. What's positive divided by positive? Fraction bigger than zero, then this whole thing is also bigger than zero. That's it? That's it? Then your lower bound is just bigger than zero, that's it? Right? And yeah, by squeeze theorem, this has to be zero. You can, yeah. Oops, where's the line, the line's gone. When you take the limit, yeah, zero, zero less than or equal to zero is still correct. Yeah, squeeze theorem isn't in the syllabus, I know, I know, but, well, that's why this is a question for. Actually, in the, in the previous version I sent you guys, I didn't put this question here, I, I removed this. But I felt like, eh, let's just put it, why not? And so I, I put it. But yeah. No, for everyone freaking out. But yeah, for those who don't know squeeze theorem, it's just basically, you find an upper bound and lower bound. If you, and you find the middle guy here. If the upper one goes to zero, and this, and this, obviously this goes to zero, then of course, this has to be squeezed to be zero. Yeah, like, that's, that's the idea, that's the idea. You squeeze something from upper and lower. If you squeeze it, of course, it, because, it has to re, be the same limit at the end. Explain, the exam is tomorrow and you're not prepared. How is zero less than zero, less than or equal to zero? It's not like that. Once you take the limit, this actually becomes a greater or less than or equal to. This, the theorem simply means that, let's say, uh, you have, let's just say f x, yeah, f x. It doesn't even have to be an equal, a less than or equal to, just less than, strictly less than is also okay. Let's say like this, yeah, sandwich theorem also. If g x goes to, let's say, let's call it like L. And h x goes to L, then of course, f, f x must also go to L. That's the idea, you squeeze it from both sides. If the upper bound goes to the same value as the lower bound, then of course, the middle guy also has to go to the same value, no way it can't, can go, uh, higher or lower than that. Maybe if I draw it graphically, makes more, would make more sense. Oops. Yeah, like that. Okay? So at this point, th- they should have the same limit. But it's not gonna be in the syllabus, you don't have to learn it, just so you know. So this goes to zero, and hence, we just have to find this value. Maybe in the exam, if they give something like this, they'll just tell you, oh, this goes to zero, it's okay. Right, so now we just have to evaluate b zero and a zero. So what's b zero again? Integral of pi by two of x squared. And then a, easier is this one, this guy. Right? And no, formal definition of a limit isn't even there, yeah, you don't need to learn formal definition. It's okay, it's not gonna be in your syllabus, it, this is harder, I, I gave you har- harder stuff. So don't worry if you don't know. Okay, so integrating x squared, you have x squared, uh, x cube over three, right? I hope I still can integrate after all that. So we have pi over two. I just read, three, pi over two, cube, all over pi over two. You get, you get this from here? Seems easy. Once you've reached uni math, you feel like, oh, further math is very straightforward. After you reach uni, university math, because it's very different. But anyways, after this, you just have to calculate this, and that's where you get pi squared over six. And tada, you're done. That took the whole page. Very cool, and this is just the part that is not in your syllabus, of course, and you don't, you don't have to know this until university, at least. Hmm, no problem, tha- that's why I gave this question. Uh, previously, when I, if you scroll up to the further math, uh, channel. You'll, you won't see this, because I didn't put it there, and then at the last minute, I was like, let's just put it, so I, so I did put it here. Just for fun. Proof of the basic problem, I don't know, I remember Euler did it with the heuristic method. But it's not in our syllabus, so we don't talk about it, haha. Eh, eh, but any questions, any questions, any questions? And this question, I don't know, this is Fourier. You can actually generalize this to find, uh, four instead. Or you can even find six, and this is all due to Fourier, Fourier series. Yeah, this is actually Fourier series. Or you can search it up, buy it. Oh, but it's not in the, of course, not in A levels. Is there a closed form for a n? Yes, there is, and we're not going to talk about that, there, but yes, there is. Okay, so DI method, sure, DI method. DI method, just simply, sorry. So of course, it's another method to do integration by parts. Okay, thanks, Alex. Do the integration by parts. But in a table way, it's basically tabular way, DI, DI method and tabular way are just the same thing. Just write, just write with D, D and I, plus, minus, plus. And of course, you want to pick the u and the d v, right, in integration by parts, the u and the d v. The u is just the different, the one you do on, the one you want to differentiate, d v is the one you want to integrate. Okay? Well, with this for everyone here, yeah, that is so sad. For example, let's say I want to integrate x power three e power x, a very classical example. With integration by parts, the normal way, you, you would always do it, you wouldn't need to do integration by parts three times. You wouldn't need to do integration by parts three times. I'm not joking, three times. But with the D I method or the tabular method, it's much easier. So of course, we want to differentiate X cubed, right? Yeah, cover it up. Yeah, that, that's, that's okay, that is okay. That, that is okay to do. We want to differentiate X cubed, so we put the X cubed here, and then we put the E power X here. So we just have to repeatedly differentiate and repeatedly integrate. So we have three X squared, sorry, three X squared, six X minus six, and then zero. Well, zero doesn't go anywhere, so just leave it be as zero. And then integration of E power X is always E power X. E X, E X, E X, E X. Exponential function. Hey? Yeah, yes. So in this D I method, once you're done with this, once you, you stop when you reach zero, or when you want to stop basically, wherever. And now, diagonals, you multiply them, all these diagonals. So your answers should look like X power three E X minus three X squared E power X plus six X E power X minus six E power X, like this. Yeah. Keep on differentiating our desired, desired result. And then plus C. Tada. And so that's your answer. Let's try one more example. Let's try one more example. Define reduction formula. Yeah, you can, you can. Yes, you can. Let's try one more example. Let's say E power X sine X. Just another example, so D I method again. And here, it's really up to you which one you differentiate or integrate. Uh, yeah, because either way, it's gonna work. Yeah. But in this case, you'll, you'll not get a zero. You know, let's, let's say I pick E power X there on a different shade, okay? Integrating sine X becomes negative cosine, and then negative sine. Okay? And of course, as you noticed, that this will never go to zero infinitely. So you have to stop somewhere until you're satisfied. So again, diagonals give multiplication. Multiplication, multiplication. But horizontal arrows is an integral. What I mean, so you have to integrate E power X times negative sine X later on. This is what I mean. So if you want to write it fully, we have the diagonals again, so diagonals give multiplication. E power X times negative cosine X. Plus, well, minus and minus gives a plus, so be careful about that. E power X sine X. And then minus, because plus and minus here, minus the integral of E power X sine X. Yes. Yeah, when, hard, yeah, yes. Uh, you have to prematurely stop it, uh, by your own will. Because, well, you technically can continue it down here, but of course, that wouldn't really help. So you have to stop it on your own will. Self-control, whatever. But yeah, and after this, I, after this, I think you already know what to do. Just move this to the other side and then divide by two. Okay? Yeah, move this, move this to your side, then divide by two. And that's your answer. Okay. That's D I method, or tabular method, same, same thing, same thing. Okay, okay, nice. Any questions for this whole question? Okay, yeah, I hope it's okay. I'll, I'll send you guys the PDF. All right, good. Let's proceed to the next one, then. Yeah, of course, yeah, I have all the time. Proceed to the next question. Tada. This guy. How did you find this question, by the way? Like, how do you find it? What do you think, Tobey, I mean? Stuck midway, nice question as well. Anyone else who tried? Stuck midway also. Did, did you guys at least get part A? Okay, good, you got part A. Of course you did, Alex. I, I know you. Oh, you didn't get part A? Oh, okay. I, I, I think there are only, what was, who is it? Who is it? Did ha- have the time to? No, yeah, it's not as messy. Okay, I think there are only three people who, three, right? Who attempted. No. Oh, you missed them, oh. And I'll use the identity. Yeah, sure. Right, so some more facts about this. Tried this, oh, okay, that's good. How was it? Didn't even try this time? So just some facts about this question. This is also from A levels. Thank you, Alex. This question is also from A levels. But not your A level. It is from the Hong Kong A levels. And here's the, uh, Hong Kong A levels. And here's the original question, I have saved it. There you go. This is the original question from the paper. It has more parts, because they give you hints. It looks real. It's nineteen seventy-five. Oops. This is nineteen seventy-five paper. Older than any of us. I don't know for Alex, maybe, maybe not. Why are you doing H K A L nineteen seventy-five? Because this was in my homework, and I'm giving you my homework question. But too bad, this Hong Kong A levels is already stopped. It just folded. What did they give H K? So here's the thing. Hong Kong A levels questions are almost, are actually like the same level as math major question. They have mean value theorem, you know, all those theorems, theorem stuff. And, uh, their A levels start at like nineteen seventy, I think, nineteen seventy-something? Determination of growth rate thresholds, I don't know. And it stopped at twenty-twelve? I can't remember if it's twenty-twelve or something. But I think it's somewhere between twenty-ten, near twenty-ten, where H K A L stopped. The thing is, it got easier over time. So the hardest one, the older it is, the harder it is. The older the paper is, the harder the paper is. Yeah. And nineteen seventy is considered the hard one. So yeah, they used to be big brain back then. It was to the point where my professor used their questions and gave it to us. Yeah, they had, yeah. Hey? So now, so now actually, the curriculum got very easy. It's much easier now than this. So back then, they did give five parts here. They tell you how, uh, well, more hints, I guess. Took that exam, probably, yeah. Actually, wait, actually, yeah, he, he could be, I think he could, yeah. But yeah. So if you think this is already hard, then my professor gave it harder, because they only give three parts here. Wait, really? By hand? I, is this by hand? I'm not sure if this is by hand. I don't, I don't think so. Let's try, let's try with the easy A level. Nah, it's okay. Because I thi- I think this is also too much. But yeah, that was the original question, but let's do the the modified version. Okay, so we have, we, we define I N as this integral. And we have to evaluate these two guys. For, for people who got part A, congrats. Let's do it together. So part A. Well, you want to try your best? Uh, I, I don't remember if it is. I'm finding out on my own, too. Yeah, for the first, oh, it is? Okay, okay, that's good. Right, so you want to try to make it as much as possible in this form. So you want to somehow remove this cosine X somehow? Well, let's, okay, let me write it down. Cosine X two plus cosine X power N D X. You want to somehow remove this guy. So the, there's a small trick here. It's by adding zero. By adding zero, I mean plus two minus two. This is adding zero technically. And then, now you can, now you can split the fraction part. So you have cosine X plus two, two plus cosine X power N minus two. Okay? And then from here, you, you see that this cancels, and this becomes N minus one. And so you have I N minus one minus two I N. Okay? Should be okay, yeah? This part? Now we can do the same thing for the, the integral. What about when it's cosine squared? Let's try just by parts again, but we, I, no need to do by parts, actually. Do the same thing. Add the zero. But this time inside the square. So you have, eh, by, next one by next one is part B? I, I don't know. And hey? And from here, you can expand this. N cosine X plus two. So you have T plus two, I'm too lazy, sorry. T plus two minus four, T plus two plus four. Or two plus C. Sorry, yeah, I'm lazy. And then, from here, now you, you can split the part again. You should be getting I N minus two minus four I N minus one plus four I N. Okay? How did you do that? Wh- wh- which, which one, which one? Professor, oh. How did you? How you messed it up? C plus two cancels, yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll put more details, I'll, I'll put more details. Split the fraction, okay? Split the fraction here. So we have one over two plus C N minus two minus four one over two plus C power N minus one plus four integral of two plus C power N. That's how you did it. Answered stuff in equations. Yeah, okay, that's good. Fourteen people watching. Hey? So you actually don't need to do I B P. Well, you can do I B P, but, uh, it's, there's also another way, and this is the way. I B P will look very painful. So this is the most optimal way, I guess. Yeah, okay. But I, I mean, at least you got it. Okay, that's good. Yeah, at least you got it. You'd, you'd be awarded marks for that. Hey? Uh, I feel like there were many people typing, and then they stopped typing. Hey? Right, now the hardest part is part B. How can you use this identity to find the reduction formula? Because it really, they don't, I, I didn't give you hints there. Actually, my professor just removed everything here. Because in here, in the original question, they give you like, oh, it should look like this. Ah, yeah, sure, we'll give, I'll give you some time. I'll give you, let's say, three minutes, so until the minute mark goes to eighteen or forty-eight, if you're, can you return to the results of A? Yeah, sure, yes, yes. Actually, I'll write it down here. I'll just write it down here. And this one is N minus two minus four N. Okay, like that? For math, Gary, this is not for your math, this is university math, it's okay. That has for the math topics. We call it happiness here. Happiness, happiness. Ask your lecturer if he did it. This is nineteen seventy-five, so he did not do it in his exam. He was at school at two thousand something? Where? If I'm not wrong, it's two thousand one or two. That, that was when he was at high school, so, yeah. The head of the department, the head of the department is I'm not even, uh, he's, I don't think he's local, he's not, he's mainland Chinese. Sorry, I don't need to, uh, H K A L. I don't know who did. I don't know who did, I'm not I don't really know the senior professors. U S T. H K U S T. University of Science and Tech. Your classmates know that? If the sweaty one? Your class, yeah, we have a Discord server. So of course they know my Discord name instantly from there. Does it have a relation with the two integrals of part A? Well, surely it has a relation with these two integrals in part A, but integral on whole square? Uh, not, not in that relation, it's a different. What about it? Um. Hmm. I don't think that works, yeah. At one point, you must do I B P, integration by parts, at one point. I don't care when, but it must happen. Whether at the beginning or at the end, I, I don't know. The sweaty one. I, I guess it is the sweaty one. No real idea, okay. It's okay, we'll discuss it. Mister Sensei, how are you doing? And P G F. It is hard. It's not very easy to see, actually. How can we get the cosine numerator of of L, L, L N? Oh, oh, I N, sorry, I N, to get a similar expression to part A. Any hints? How can we get the cosine numerator of I N? That's where the hint is at, right here. It's this cosine squared plus sine squared X is equal to one. Well, if you think about it, this is one, right? But one is cosine squared plus sine squared, so, yeah. That's the, that's why the hint is given. Mama, we expected that, right? One day, just because, just stuck at that. The whole, well, the hint is given that cosine squared plus sine squared is one, so replace one by that. Yeah, it's like that, basically. And then you apply, yeah, no, you apply it like, some way, somehow, you apply it. Lovely. Hey, you need some discussion now? You want me to discuss it now, or you still? You want me to discuss it now, or you still wanna work on it somehow? If you guys still wanna work on it, it's fine, I'll, I'll wait, I, I hold the time. Yeah, I won't. Go for it? Yeah, so go for it, yeah? Sure, I, I don't mind, uh. Okay, let's go for it then. Right, using, using the hint, find the reduction formula. You might have different ways, because there's not only one method to do this, but I'll show you my method. Doing this. We start from. This guy. We start from him. Okay, so, and we know the, what do you call it? The identity for this? Oh, sorry, it's this guy here, but we'll use that later. But the point is that we, we start from something we know. And then, now we apply the IBP. What do you differentiate? So you let you become the cosine x. Eh, sorry, not the cosine, sorry. It's the one over two plus cosine x power n. And then the d v is the cosine x. I have to do something else, uh. Yeah, sure. And there will be the recording anyway, you can just watch the recording, no problem. Okay, bye bye, see you. Right, so using this integration by parts, let's integrate. So integrating cosine will give you sine. So we have. Wait, do I have a zero to pi over two? There's no zero to pi over two, sorry. I still. Still remember. Yeah, somehow you have to play with that, yes. I'll, I'll show you my way first. I, I, either way, you can get it anyway. Right? Integrating cosine gives you sine, so you have sine x. Am I integrated this correctly? Okay, sine x two plus sine x power n. Wait, I come doing something wrong, am I? Hmm? Am I doing something wrong? Wait. I feel like I. I don't remember getting this, do I? Uh, let me just continue it first, let me just continue it first. Oh yeah, on the right track, okay, thank you, okay, okay. Alright, thank you, thank you. Memories. Right, so now we have to differentiate the u, so we get the d u. So negative, so minus integral of, what's the derivative of this? So d u is just. Well, uh, typical power rule and the general stuff, you should get sine x again, right? Cosine x again. So n sine x over two plus cosine x. And this one d x, like this. Right, Alex? Yeah, should be right. Okay, thank you. Right? And then we just have to put it, so I'll put the n outside. And then multiply sine x with this guy. So we have sine square x now. Two plus cosine x. Okay? I'll move this aside, cause I don't need this anymore. Bye bye. So where do I apply the identity? Right here. So you have sine x over two plus cosine x. And this is where you apply the identity, actually, where I add at least. So you become one minus cosine square x. Okay? And now, I think you can see that we're only dealing with the things that we can deal with. So if I split the integral up, I'll write an s and c, like, I'm lazy. Allow me to be lazy. At all these integrals, we know how to deal with them. Didn't get me anywhere, you. But all, all, all of these we already know, right? For example, this one is, what was it before? i n minus one. That's two i n, right? Okay? Yeah. So i n minus one minus two i n. We, yeah, we all accept the sign, well. This is not an integral. Th- this is just. It's not an integral, yeah. So there's no problem. And we know how to deal with this already. So I can just, uh, copy all of these. Minus n. n plus one plus, oh, what's for the cos, the cosine square, I can't remember. So. i n minus one minus four i n plus four i n plus one. Yeah, that. Okay? Now you need to integrate, in the other approach, you need to integrate, yeah. Uh, either method uses IBP. You all, you must have an IBP somewhere. And now from here, you can make i n plus one the subject. That's the tire required, actually. Okay? You can make i n plus one the subject now. And how do you do that? So tight, oh my god. Sorry, there should be an n here. Should be an n here. Should be an n. Yeah, like that. Yeah, missing an n, yeah, I, I found it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good luck simplifying this, but anyways, i- i- you should be getting this idea. So easy to simplify it. But yeah, you should get this idea. Today. Okay? I, I'm not gonna simplify it, cause it takes a lot of time, so I'm just gonna copy it down. Where is it? Where's my reference? So one over the n minus one. Okay? Just like that. And then you're done. Paste that back there, uh, I can't, um, I, I mean, I can paste it, but. Make it very small. I, 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 I can't crop it too. Like, I can't just like, using, even the Good Notes copy system, it doesn't. Doesn't work, yeah. Wait, can I crop it? Time on the pick? Once more? I'm done, alright, thanks for telling me. There you go. Thanks. Okay, I never knew about that, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Never seen this one before, okay. Let's do it. Okay, so and that's how you do it for part b. And then part c, I think you guys can do it on your own, I think you guys have the idea, right? It's to be useful somewhere. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Part c, you just, it's normal, you're, you're normal for your math stuff, where they just tell you, oh, find it when n is three. And there you go, you find that answer. Okay? I think you guys can do that one. Or do you want me to discuss it? The complex summation, okay. Complex summation, alright, alright, let's go to complex summation then. Be very excited for it. Ta-da. This was in my, also in my homework. I'm just, is there, is, isn't there a last part? Yeah, there is, there is a last part, but I think they can do it on their own. Cause it's just full of computation. I'm sure, I believe these guys can do it. Okay, you guys are not that bad, right? I hope not. That was scary, no, it's not that scary. No, you're not that, that, no, nah. I'm sure you guys can do it. No, you're not, you're not. That's not why. Manipulating my words. Anyways, let's do this question now. So we have to consider this polynomial here, we're given this polynomial. And we somehow have to find the result of this product. That gives out a very nice answer somehow. Okay? This was in my homework, my complex analysis homework. The first homework, actually. Out of all the homeworks, there is this, the first one. So, yeah, yeah, a good question, yes. Also, this is complex, this is product, not a summation. Summation is when you sum them, you plus them. Sum of B z. No sums are involved in this question. So there is nothing to do with summation, actually, only product. Summation is plus, this is some, this is summation. Summation is plus, 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 plus. Why is this not in the question, it's standard textbook, because it's from another professor, it's a different professor. Yeah, these are all multiplication side. Yeah, it's called product, the big pi. This is when you multiply, 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 multiply. You added them. That is why it's, yeah, it's wrong. Yeah, it's a product. Have, have you guys seen this notation before? Maybe other than astid? Just call it product. Okay, good then. Cause I will, oh, you never. So just for P G F. I know you know what the summation symbol means, you add them. This is just the same thing, but multiplication, that's it. So you can technically say n factorial s. You can write it as this. Yeah? Just an example. Because you multiply from one to n. Same example, because it's the most simple one. It's the most simple one. Yeah? Okay. Oops. Okay. So let's start. Alex, I'll be using your solution, cause your solution is very easy. Ha ha, sorry. I hope you don't mind. Okay. So let's study the polynomial first. Of course, when you have a polynomial, you always want to look for its zeros, right? The roots of a polynomial, so you know, here it's zero. Well, then let's try to find the roots. Let's, yeah, roots of unity. So we have z plus one, oops. Z plus one power n is equal to one. Well. We have a power of n. And one is nothing but e to the pi i k, right? And for any k, yeah, so we have o- over n. As he is called. Okay. So therefore, z plus one is it. Go to e to the power of two pi i k over n. And k ranges from, from, from zero, one, up to n, right? Eh, sorry, n minus one, right? Yeah, n minus one. So we have n roots, of course, by, by the fundamental theorem of algebra. Okay, so that means the roots are just negative one plus all of these roots, all of these roots of unity. Very nice. This unity, okay? Right? But then, where does the sign come from, you know? I'll give a reaction to. If you, if you think about it, these are all products. And if you, and, yeah, by imaginary part, but also we're, we're not just thinking about the sign, but these are all products. What gives you products from a polynomial? Any idea, anything that relates to product? Factorizing, uh, I don't think factor, factorizing will help here. And factorizing will give you z. Will give you different z's. Yeah, yeah, I know the roots, I, yeah, factorize by the roots. Oh, this is the question, right here. Just right here, this is the question. Oh, oh. What does products have to do with polynomials? Z, yeah, z minus root times z minus root times z minus root, but but where's the sign, right? Not sure if the sign will help there. And also, what, from what you say, z minus root will give you this form. It's equal to zero, so where's the n over two power n minus one? Right? Where's the, where would this come from? Yeah, multiplying the roots, right? For a polynomial, that means the constant term is the product of all the roots, correct? I think that makes much more sense, no, 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 McLaren series needed. This is complex number, no need back forward. Okay. So therefore, we need to study the, what's the value of the product of the roots, correct? Correct, right? Okay, so let's do that. So that means we have to find the constant term of this. Of this guy. Right? So P z. Last one. Okay? And now let's try to expand this. When we get conjugates in between, nothing to do with conjugates. And nothing to do with conjugates, yeah, well, the roots have conjugates, but they're, we'll see. Would give one or either. Um. That's what will be, how will be constant. Wait, oh, I, I don't get, I don't get your question. Conjugates multiple give or? Yeah? Z minus one root, okay, z minus one root. I'll put zk here. zk. And z minus one. Oh. Yeah, yeah. Okay, I, I. So we're essentially doing? Yeah, yeah, exactly, yes, that's correct. No, I don't know whether n is odd or even. Yeah? How is this, well, the point is, we tried to find out. We, we just, let's try to expand z plus one power n. Yeah, it, it is zero, but we'll, we'll try to expand. And just see, let, let's just study it as much as possible. So we try to expand z plus one, okay? The z plus one over n by the binomial theorem. You guys remember? Binomial theorem. So we should have z power n plus n choose one, power n minus one. Up until n choose n minus one. Z plus one, and then minus one. And here you see that the constants actually cancel. So you technically don't have a constant term in here. Technically, technically. Eh, sorry. But what you can do, yeah, you have a z as common factor, that's what you wanna factor out. So z power of z n minus one. So the, i- if you think about this whole polynomial, then the product of the roots is just zero. So one of them has to be zero, one of the roots has to be zero, which we do not want. Okay? There, there, it's not, alright, it's not geometric progression. This is, yeah, this is not, this is not geometric progression. So it's two up to n choose n minus one. There, it's not a geometric progression. There, it's not a geometric progression. It's not. It's binomial expansion. Yeah, n to, n choose n minus one is just n, so I can just replace it, replace this with n. So if you think about this whole polynomial, then the product of zeros is, the product of roots is zero. This is, this is plus zero, right? But if you instead think about this polynomial here, then the product of roots must have n in it. But we're missing something. It's not just n. What's, why is that missing thing? If you multiply all the roots, z one, z two, up to zn, it must have something to do with n, but what's missing? The bo, no, no, polynomial itself. A scalar factor, y yeah, there's some, there's some number that we have to multiply with, why is it? From your further peer one? Not minus one, no, it's a negative one. Power n, almost there. It's negative one power n minus one. Right? Yeah, same here. Right, remember? Let's say, if we have a cubic, let's say you have a cubic. Then we have a plus, minus, plus, minus, right? So the, so the product of all the roots, that's gamma, is equal to negative c. This negative, this negative comes from, well, that that depends on the power of this highest power, right? I can write this as negative one power three c. Okay? And if you have a power four instead, let's say x power four, and d plus da 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 plus d. Then the product of all roots is just d, cuz it's positive also. Negative one power four is one. And so we generalize it to power n minus one. Okay? So be careful about that. Okay, be careful about that. Now the question is, and if you notice here, we already have n, which is good, because that's what we want. We have an n here. Right? In the original question, we want to find an n somehow, some way. Which we already have, so that's great. Now the only problem is, how do we find these signs? So surely it has to come from the roots, right? So how can you produce a root from this, from this sign? Is where, there's a small trick that we have to do. Do you guys wanna find it out? I'll put this here. Beautiful factorization. Why would you like to speak? Ah, he left. Somebody requested to speak before. Minus one is e to the zero, e to the zero is positive one, actually. Either pi i is negative. We need to somehow, oh, the negative of that, oh. Um, no, we need to produce a sign, you know, that's it, like this be something, 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 and suddenly you have like sine something. Yeah, sine. The Movers. Yeah, the Movers basically, but but how, how to create that sign, give us this. I I hate it when, you know, you need to change sign and then sign. It's, it's so, it's so annoying. Yeah, something to do with that. But here, I'll I'll show you the way. Actually, this is Alex's way, just, I'll just create everything to Alex. It is technically the imaginary, well, yeah, it is the imaginary part, but how are you gonna do imaginary part in products? Imaginary part in products, it's very different from summing them. i power n, where i n is even. Oh, no, I didn't know. So here's, here's the trick here. I'm gonna factorize out e to the pi i k over n. Yeah, I'll just show you. Pi i k over n. So I multiply with e to the pi i k over n minus e to the negative pi i k over n, like that. I think you can see it now? You just need to produce a sin, yeah, yeah, complex definition of sine. There you go. And now then you have e to the pi i k over n times two i sine pi k over n. And this, what makes even more sense is that k goes from zero to n minus one. And you see, if it goes from one, two, three, up to n minus one, right here? You can only do imaginary part when you take summation, but when you take products, it's different. Like, I I'll I'll give you a small example. Let's say a plus bi plus c plus di. The imaginary part of this is not b times d. Because, yeah, when you multiply this, you you have a very different measure part. Let's say, imaginary part comes from cb, right, da 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 da, plus i cb plus ad. So this is the imaginary part. Yeah, not dd. Okay? And that's why imaginary parts or real parts don't work in products. Well, technically they do work, but not as how you think it work, not as simple as the summation version. Okay, so be careful about that. Picnic pot, exponential note. Okay? Now here's the thing. This holds for k go, k from zero to n minus one, yeah? The problem is when k is zero, then then this root is zero, right? Sin of zero is zero. And moreover, this is a a polynomial with n minus one. Sin of pi is always zero, but you never reach pi. You only reach pi if there's an n here, but you never reach pi. So don't worry about that. It's only the zero that we don't want. Okay? And moreover, there are, this is a polynomial of power n minus one, so we should only expect n minus one product, n minus one roots, right? So it would make sense to remove the zero here, we just exclude it. Okay? Right? And therefore, from what we know here, the product of all of these from one to n minus one must be equal to this. Oh, z power is, yeah, yeah, exactly. This z power is the one that satisfies the zero, which we excluded already. So that means we have the product, I'm gonna use the product notation now. I hope you're ready. And take the product of everything. Uh so far, okay, so far, okay? Those are my roommates. Those are my roommates. Sorry about that. Okay, thank you. Alright, so all 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 good, okay, so far? Okay, then let's take the product. No, no, there's no, they're all all English. All are in English. Okay? So let's take the, take the product. Notice that for products, you can split apart. I'll show you what I mean. You can split the product apart like this. So okay for you guys? You can split it? Anyone confused about this? This is too heavy for you guys. Right? And then, from here, this is just a product of exponents. We can convert it to the sum, n minus one. Did I forget? Did I forget? Negative one. Oh, wait, wait, what? Oh, right, sorry, 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 sorry. There's a two i here. Sorry, sorry, sorry. There's a two i. Yeah, there's a two i here. And yeah, n minus one. I don't know why I spotted two i instead. And so I I'll split the part two. N minus one. And two i. The only hard part is now simplifying. Is there a constant that we can keep out? Yeah, uh, well, even if it's not a constant, like these two guys, you can, you can split it apart. Yeah, okay. Well, it become two i, yes, correct. So this becomes two i to the power of n minus one. That's correct. Because you keep multiplying it for n minus one times. Now for this one, you just, you you keep multiplying well, e to the pi i over n times e to the pi i two over n. So you're just a actually adding them. So one plus two plus three up to n minus one, like that. Right? And lastly, this is what we want to look for, so we'll just keep it like this. Yeah, this is just the original thing, which we want to look for. So if we make this a subject and we make this a subject, we should get the answer. This one, yes, but it's n times n minus one, not n times n plus one. Okay, so we have two i power n minus one, e to the pi i over n. And I just write everything, basically. This is two, yeah, two. I'm I'm lazy to write it, let's just call this p, cuz for products, it's funny. Funny p. Okay? And you can see that this cancels. And I'll split this apart into two power n minus one, i power n minus one. So we have e to the pi i over two n minus one. Okay, p. But notice that, what's e to the pi i, pi i over two, e to the pi over two i, whatever you're gonna call it. What's this value here? Yeah, it's just i. So I can replace it by i. And so this becomes negative one power n minus one, and then you can cancel it. And so input this to our side, you should get this. Okay? That's how you do it. So by solving it in two ways, you're solving it in two ways, you get to solve the whole problem. You you get something new. Okay? And this will be useful because they're like more, what, who's trying? Why, why, why are you here? Well, this question can come in our papers. Am I the only one? Well, no idea. If if, even if it comes out in your paper, they all tell you what to do, like make it to part a, b, c. Like, find the uh the roots, express it this way, now expand x z plus one, and yeah, just do everything. They'll, they'll tell you, they'll tell you to do that step by step. But for our homework, they just give you this and find it out on your own. No, no hints, no nothing, just find it out on your own. My, my solution is also like this. It's, thi- this was in my homework, complex analysis homework. The very first homework, yeah. So the other homers are crazier. Let's not talk about the other homers.